Good morning. I'll call our meeting to order for September the 10th. And we'll start with the roll call. So from Asfidel Norwood, Mayor Wilford is caught in traffic. And he will be here and entering the chamber at any moment, God willing. Deputy Warden Burt.
Deputy Mayor.
Not often we get a traffic jam in Peterborough County. And Gavin Monaghan, we have Mayor Graham.
Present.
And Deputy Mayor Huntley.
Present.
And Duro Dummer, Mayor Watson.
Good morning.
And Deputy Mayor Noutson.
Present.
And the Havelock Valmont Mathieu, Jim Martin, Mayor Martin has sent his regrets. And Deputy Mayor Webb made it through the traffic film and he is here.
Thank you.
North Cordeau, we have Mary Amy Ott.
No traffic up here. Good morning.
Deputy Mayor Whelan. And Otanviee South Monaghan, we have Mayor Taylor.
We do.
And myself, Deputy Mayor Clark. And in Salwen, we have the Deputy Warden and Mayor Sennis.
Present.
And Deputy Mayor Black.
Present.
And in Trent Lakes, we have Mayor Lambshead.
I am present.
And Deputy Mayor Armstrong.
Present.
Thank you. We will now start with our land acknowledgement. Oh, welcome. Traffic heavy this morning, Mayor Wilford. With deep respect, we acknowledge the lands and interconnected waterways that bind us together, the foundation for all life. These lands serve as a keeper of history and stories and are a source of inspiration. In recognizing this, we embrace that all living things possess an important energy and purpose. We extend the utmost gratitude to the original peoples who have been caretakers of these lands and waters of this region from time immemorial and to this day who continue this commitment. Peterborough County's dedication to reconciliation remains steadfast. In this spirit, we are committed to nurturing meaningful partnerships and connections that contribute to an environment of prosperity and well-being for all generations to come. This acknowledgement is made on the Treaty 20 land and the territory of the Michisawig Anishinaabe and within the traditional lands of the Michisawig and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaty First Nations. Further, our gratitude is extended to the nations of Alderville, Bozalé, Curve Lake, Georgina Island, Hiawatha, Rama, and Skugog Island. Thank you. I'll ask for adoption of the addendum agenda and move by councillor Graham and second by councillor Lambshead. All in favor? Thank you. Does any councillor have a declaration of the cunyary interest in any agenda item? And if so, please disclose in your interest and the general nature of that thereof. And I see none. Thank you. We have our minutes of August the 6th meeting in our package and the special meeting and the regular council meeting of August the 13th, moved by Deputy Warden Sennis and second by councillor Burt. All in favor? Thank you. And we'll start off with our delegations. I'd like to welcome Alexis Doyle and ask her to come to the podium. And I think online, we're going to have Daphne Ertabees as well. Okay, I'm just waiting for... Oh, there she is. Welcome, Daphne. And here to speak on our Alto High-Speed Rail. So, welcome.
Can everyone hear me okay? I'm told not to touch the mic, so I just want to make sure I'm close enough for everyone to hear me. I want to begin by thanking Warden and council for having us today to present on this very exciting project. My name is Alexis Doyle. I'm the manager for community relations here at Alto, responsible, based here in Peterborough actually, and responsible for stakeholder municipal and public engagement on this project. And joined with me online is Daphne Ertabees. She's the director of Special Projects. She'll be here to support, there she is. She'll be here to support any technical questions you might have at the end of the presentation. Alto is a federal crown corporation formerly known as Via High Frequency Rail or Via HFR. And we are responsible for delivering a high-speed rail project that would bring European standards and G7 standards travel to Canada. Next slide, please. So zeroing in on the specific challenges this project aims to address. Alto's high-speed rail project will help to improve productivity throughout the corridor and surrounding areas. Currently, productivity for Ontario and Quebec is falling behind compared to G7 countries in the rest of Canada. Now, we know that the costs continue to climb, not only for transportation with the increased prices of fuel and air travel, but it also extends to delays due to the congestion and to infrastructure maintenance for highways and roads with the increased wear and tear from high-traffic areas. As travel in this area continues to increase with population growth, the existing transportation infrastructure will only become more congested over time. And finally, disconnected communities like Peterborough and the surrounding areas along the corridor means a lack of connectivity which can impact the efficient movement of people and goods. Next slide. So this project proposes to connect seven city centers along the corridor, bring 60% of Canada's population into three capitals and two large cities closer together, with the corridor stations not only in Toronto, but also Peterborough, Ottawa, Laval, Montreal, Trois-Rivières, and Quebec City up in the top right-hand corner. Next slide. So this project will run on 1,000 kilometers of dedicated electrified track with speeds up to 300 kilometers an hour. And this will offer fast services, fast services that will reduce the travel time throughout the Toronto-to-Quebec City corridor. Because of those high-speed options, there are specific design requirements that would necessitate that new track, track, sorry, dedicated to moving people only, which is a benefit of increasing the reliability to ensure trains arrive on time and it brings you where you need to go when you expect it. Now, similar to the previous scope of the project, which was a conventional rail project, this would also offer frequent service and we're targeting 20 to 30 daily departures that would enable convenient options that would accommodate flexible travel schedules. Next slide. Now, to give you a sense of timing, travel times between city stations will be reduced significantly. So you can kind of see there, based on some of those city station pairings and what the travel times are today compared to what we project once the high-speed rail is in service. Passengers will be able to get from downtown Toronto to downtown Montreal in three hours. And for those in Peterborough and the surrounding areas, we will expect a train service to Toronto in 40 minutes or less. So these times incentivize a transition away from cars and from planes to high-speed rail. Next slide. Now, there are several other outcomes that this project will include. That increased in rail travel adoption will also result in safer travel between cities. I know Highway 7 for us is a stretch of road that's particularly challenging and has had a number of fatalities and accidents over the many years. It'll also reduce, the project will reduce environmental impacts with fewer cars on the road. And we're also excited about the meaningful contribution that this project offers for reconciliation with Indigenous peoples with whom Alto has been engaging for several years. And increased availability and accessibility of affordable services throughout the corridor is also expected. On this next slide, I just want to zero in on the specific economic opportunities which will stretch along the southern Ontario and into Quebec, which is already a hub for economic and social activity, accounting for 58% of Canada's GDP today. The high-speed rail project is projected to contribute to an increase of 1.1% of Canada's GDP. That's approximately $24 billion annually through increased productivity, with cities being brought closer together, higher participation in the workforce, and increased tourism. Looking at the next slide for timelines. Alto launched a rigorous IFP process back in 2023, which identified three qualified bidders who submitted project proposals that included that conventional rail service and it also included the high-speed rail project as well. So following the results of this competition, we selected Cadence in February with the announcement by then Prime Minister Trudeau. And with the advancement of the development phase, which we are now in, we plan to deliver this high-speed rail project along the corridor with Cadence. Now, what we hope to achieve during this five-year period for the development phases on this next slide. So we will identify the corridor and the exact alignment, select station locations, complete the regulatory process, acquire the land, and finalize the engineering design plans. And at the end of this development, which can take, as I said, up to five years, and we are encouraged to see where we can find time efficiencies and make that a shorter timeline. Alto and Cadence will present a cost and timeline to the federal government with a shovel-ready proposal, after which, if approved, we will move into that construction phase. Just to give you a sense on this next slide of who Cadence is, it is a consortium of rail infrastructure companies based here in Canada, but also in France, with expertise on delivering high-speed rail projects on a global scale. Now, next, I just want to touch on the project engagement here at Alto. We'll design and implement an engagement process that ensures we reflect the local needs across the corridor and provide transparent, respectful communications with an inclusive and collaborative approach. On this next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about our Community Benefits Plan because we're aware that this project, the project outcomes do not necessarily support all communities throughout the corridor, especially those who are not in close proximity or supported by one of the seven station locations. So recognizing this, Alto is in the initial stages of creating a Community Benefits Plan that will create sustained measurable benefits for impacted communities along project alignment. Now, the early vision for this program includes a focus on economic opportunities through employment and the procurement process for local businesses. And we hope to have an early, an initial strategic roadmap for our community benefits for the project by the end of this year. We will then engage with impacted communities in 2026 and 2027 to develop community benefits that reflect the regional needs and those opportunities. Next slide, please. Great. So in the near term, just looking at the end of this year and into early next, we will continue to engage with municipal representatives to brief elected officials and staff on the project and on our ongoing progress. We will also be hosting a series of roundtable discussions with key stakeholders to gather input and considerations that will inform project planning for corridor options. Now, in addition to those roundtables focused on station locations, we're also interested in hosting conversations throughout the corridor within rural areas to understand stakeholder perspectives, explore mitigations, and identify potential opportunities. We would welcome the opportunity to present to your respective councils in advance of those roundtables and to understand whom, from your perspective, should be invited to those conversations as you all know your communities best. Now, the public open houses will also be scheduled to build awareness of the project and gather input along the corridor. And that will be complemented with an online consultation platform as well. For people who are not able to walk through our doors and meet us face to face, they'll have a chance to learn more about the project and have a similar experience on our website and through a number of other virtual experiences. Now, all the dates for these events still need to be confirmed. And as we identify those dates, they will be posted on our website. And we'll be sure to reach out to the county directly to make you aware of those events and where they will occur. So just to final, to finish off rather in the next step slide, our priority to be, our priority continues to be on building awareness of the project and sharing information with municipalities throughout the corridor. Again, we'd welcome the chance to share more information with your respective councils in advance of those roundtables and open houses to ensure that your representatives are informed and can ask questions before we speak with constituents. I want to again thank Peterborough County for having us here today and for the opportunity to provide an overview of the project and share more about our local engagement and stakeholder engagement in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexis. It's nice to have a representative that lives amongst us here. So we appreciate that. Open it up for questions. I see Deputy Warden Sennis.
Thank you, through you. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's exciting. I have to say, we've been hearing about this for a long time. I hope it comes to pass in my lifetime. One of the questions you will get from the general public probably will be, do you have at this point in time a price point for a ticket cost to go from Peterborough to Toronto?
Yeah.
I know it's probably premature, but the public will want to know that.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they will. So we don't yet have the ticket costs identified or defined just yet. But we do anticipate to offer a variety of ticket prices to ensure that we are able to support the needs, whether you're a commuter or looking to do more of a business travel experience between city stations. So we're hoping to have a number of different ticket options to support ridership across economic situations and to support those types of experiences that we're looking to have. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for flagging that. Now councillor Black and then councillor Taylor.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Thanks for the presentation. I came to Peterborough in 1978 from Toronto. And one of the vivid memories I retained was this huge announcement that the train was coming to Peterborough. Peter Adams, I think, was our MP at the time. And for some reason, that has stuck with me because I thought the 115 was still single lane at that point. And wow, would it be great to have a train to get down into Toronto from Peterborough on a regular basis because obviously I had family and everybody there. So, yeah, as the deputy warden says, I hope we can see it in my lifetime as well. But one of the things you mentioned was that it's a people-only train. But then you also talked about business development, supply chain opportunities. So without product moving on this train, how does that support supply chain improvements? And again, given that the station will likely be in Peterborough County and not the city of Peterborough, if you want to get in and out fast, how is that going to impact the county?
Can you repeat the second part? Sorry?
So you talked about initially that it would be people-only train.
Yes, yes, yes.
But then you talked about economic development and supply chain improvements and things like that.
Right.
If there's no product on it, how does it help move? Because we do a lot of supply chain stuff now, or the GTA and Germ Region and so on already. But without, and more efficiently of moving that into the further parts of the GTA, how will this impact that or support it?
So it'll support it indirectly with the existing Via Rail corridor that's along the lake shore, which right now supports both freight and passenger rail. By offering this particular rail service, it alleviates some of that service. It'll allow them to be more efficient with their schedules, both from the perspective of moving the goods, but also moving the people on the Via Rail options today. So there's that opportunity and that refinement that will happen just south of us here. It's going to be dedicated to people. As I mentioned, the technology and the design itself doesn't lend to freight. And so it'll be passenger people only. But that's the advantage from a goods and services perspective is freeing up the existing corridor down to the south. The other piece, and maybe just to refine and better explain that procurement or supply chain development and the opportunities tied to that for local businesses throughout the corridor, it's more in that procurement and build-out and construction. So that's still a supply chain concept for us and a major build. That's as extensive as this project proposes. So that supply chain piece is supporting the build-out and delivery and operations of our service.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Taylor, councillor Whelan, councillor Grant.
Thank you, Warden Clark. And I thank you, Alexis, for the presentation. And if you are a Peterborough girl, you'll be quite familiar with this. This, some concept of rail travel throughout the area has been around for decades. It started out with, I remember, the Shining Waters Railway. And it just keeps, it just keeps coming back as a different version. This is the first time, I think, we've heard a passenger-only service, which has its merits, but as councillor Black has said, there's some concerns around that as well. In the report, you said the, there's estimated to be perhaps 20 to 30 departures from some of the stations. How many trains on the track will it take to achieve that?
That's a, that's a great question. I wonder if, Daphne, you have an estimate there or if it's too soon to know just at this moment?
It is definitely too soon because we don't know what type of rolling stocks we'll be purchasing. However, based on our concept of operations, our needs, and what has been established in terms of the number of departure and the alignment, the direction of the track, we'll be establishing the right, the right number of trains, cars, and what we need.
Okay, thank you. I'm also curious about the technology with a purely electric train. Is the, the batteries, obviously they're a big battery to run these trains. Are they continuously recharged from the wheels rolling on the track? Or is it some other method of keeping the batteries charged up?
It's going to be a catenary system, so electric wires overhead.
Okay, okay. Like a subway or a streetcar, like a streetcar. Okay.
Exactly.
Streetcar, okay. Thank you. The others, the other point that I want to make, and this can't be discounted anymore, you know what? I'll avoid traveling on the 401 any way that I can because of the volume of traffic. Now, half of that traffic is tractor-trailers and it'd be nice to see something to reduce that. But even the number of passenger cars, if we can get, if we can get 10% of those cars off the roads and onto the trail, there's a huge greenhouse gas benefit to that. And this was something that was, something that was suggested many years ago. It seems even more important now than it was 10 years ago when that was the original concept. So I'd like to see, as this project moves forward, move that benefit right to the top because it's huge. And if it's affordable, it's going to be really well-received, I think, by a lot of people. So I'm excited. I hope, again, like the rest of them, deliver long enough to actually get a ride in this thing. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Yes.
Councillor Whelan.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, I probably will live long enough to see it. But Alexis, you're talking about 1,000 kilometers of land, special cars, but special tracks, special overhead wiring. You know, have you got any idea what this is going to cost?
So the costs right now still need to be determined. That's part of the development phase we're in today. By the end of these five years, just because there are unique considerations for any one of those 1,000 kilometers, whether it's level rail or raised or tunnel, those implications have costs associated with it from a design perspective. So understanding and refining and knowing exactly where we're going across up and under throughout that 1,000 kilometers will be essential to understanding the costs associated with the project. So right now, that timeline and cost piece is something we don't yet know, but we will define as the years go on. And that will be a part of our proposal to the federal government when we ask for approval to start construction.
Okay. And just as a follow-up, where are you going to get the money?
It is a federal project. So.
Who is?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, the way they're giving it away, it might not have any left by the time you get there.
Councillor Graham.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. Thank you for coming. Thanks for the update. Like you said, it's a monumental project. I understand that, and I can appreciate there's a lot of preemptive and we're a little early stages for some interest. But kind of an extension of councillor Black's comment, I'm curious, do you have sort of a vision or any sort of maybe existing locations where we might get an understanding of what a station would look like? Because I'm curious if there's maybe a bit more of an example that we could sort of get an understanding of, you know, whether it's land, whether it's facilities, whether it's, you know, all of those sorts of details that might be available because it's not so much, you know, in progress. But if there's some sort of example, whether it's international or otherwise, that we might be able to investigate to sort of get an understanding of where and how and what the implications of that sort of build would have in the region.
Sure. And I think as, as stations are defined, it can really vary, right? As to like the needs of that area or what have you. So part of that development phase or part of these next five years is understanding what the expectation is for a station here in Peterborough and those additional services that it could support. You can imagine for the station in Peterborough and the station in Trois-Rivières, what it will do for the community and surrounding area and how it will shift the landscape will be significant. And so trying to future-proof that station to support what it looks like over the years of service for this train will be important. And I know we will be engaging, Daphne, I know that this is a priority for the technical team to make sure that we are engaging not only with yourselves and stakeholders to help identify the opportunities around that design for a station in Peterborough, but also some input from, from the public as well. Daphne, anything to add?
Well, that's exactly it. I mean, a station per se can be as small as two platforms. But it's about how we want to, you know, integrate it to the community, you know, what kind of services are relevant to the, to the various points we'll be servicing. And that's what we're trying to establish in the next four to five years.
Thank you.
Councillor Watson and councillor Huntley.
Well, I mean, thank you and through you, piggybacking on councillor Graham's question, actually, as it relates to stations specifically, around location, just thinking, trying to get ahead of perhaps some of the concerns that residents might have about if one is in their backyard, so to speak, whether that's, you know, the city backyard or the county or wherever that may be directly. What kinds of public health concerns and safety concerns is in terms of traffic movement in and out of a station, like volumes are we looking at potentially? And this is probably way ahead of where you're at, but, you know, and in terms of noise. And again, you know, are there other examples of communities where they've had to address kind of negatives? And don't get me wrong, this is an absolutely positive project that I, you know, I'm happy to hear about. But, but I also am thinking about, you know, potential conflicts that might happen as, as the process continues to unfold over the next five years. So we'll continue to work with the, the public and with stakeholders to understand where there are maybe opportunities to mitigate or understand what their concerns are. When I think about existing rail service today, especially for a high-speed rail, like noise is something that's, that often is raised as a, as a concern. Interestingly enough, the decibels for a high-speed rail is similar or less than a freight. And so when you are able to do that comparison, it helps manage expectations or helps to maybe relieve some of those concerns when you actually have some tangible information to work off of. I think your suggestion around understanding examples of other projects is going to be incorporated into an open house experience so that people understand what this looks like in other jurisdictions to help paint the picture for a local, a local project of this, of this kind. And through the roundtables and establishing communication and relationships early with those key stakeholders across the corridor, be it close to the station locations or along the line, is going to be essential so that we can find those compromises or those win-wins with, with ourselves and those who will be close to the line and have it in their backyard. So.
Thank you. Councillor Huntley.
Through you, good. Through you, Chair. Nice to see you again, Alexis. And thank you for coming and giving this presentation. A question for you, but to start off, these high-speed trains running crisscross Europe like crazy, like they're, they're in highly dense populations in Japan. I mean, they work. Like, we are at least a century behind in terms of realized value in this country, especially for passengers. And so it's very exciting to see this happening. And as it's been alluded to, it's been a long time coming and it may still be a long time coming. But I still have those. and it may still be a long time coming, but I still have faith that it'll show up here soon rather than later. Yeah, that's unfortunate now because we obviously have to go through far more rigor and consultation to get get it actually implemented. But it will be very exciting for for Canada and Peterborough County when when this does come to fruition, which I really hope it does. But I guess my question is, you did say you were going to start talking to councils and hold workshops. Like, is there a timeline for that? Like, are we talking a year from now, six months from now, five years from now? Like, what what sort of timeline are you talking in terms of actually starting this consultation?
For starting the consultation, it's as early as like late late this year, early next. So January in particular is probably where you'll start to see us in the public. Well, I know you'll see us in the public. I know that when we looked at that timeline, it showed a Gantt chart that had the open houses and the roundtables, as well as the ongoing engagement with municipalities happening this year. The roundtables and open houses specifically on that Gantt chart shows like a November start. But being thoughtful of the holiday season and realizing that there's usually a blackout period anyhow when it comes to engagement, just because people are focused on other things and family throughout December, that we will start to launch those roundtables and open houses in January throughout the corridor. So that's as soon as the engagement will begin where it is detailed conversation. I I know that we are technical colleagues, we've had a chance to meet with Peterborough County already and city staff or county staff, rather, and that our technical team hopes to continue that conversation. It it will launch very shortly as as the ultimately the the summary of that.
Good to hear. Thank you.
I see no further questions. Just have a few. I'm very optimistic. I I find I've been on municipal politics for a number of decades. So recall all the announcements, and I find that likely the fourth or fifth announcement is when something gets done. So I think we're just about there on that side. Couple of things, when you do have that schedule, if that could be shared so we can put it out to municipalities and also on the county website to have input. Very cognizant around the, you know, the energy grid, the hydro here and how much that will take. We do know with our developments that can be challenging. So I think that is a heads up on that. The other thing is the TransCanada Trail, and we're very protective of that. So certainly, you know, the impact on that, where this will be located. And also in Havlock Belmont Bethune, we do have ninety-five acres there that could be utilized for service, et cetera. So I hope that is certainly to be talked about and discussed as well, talking about economic impacts. But we do know that high speed rail is not going to go through the center of the city. So we need to be engaged because it will impact the counties. So thank you very much for coming here today and Daphne as well for coming, and we look forward. Yes, yes. I'm sorry, yeah, Counselor Webb, I can see, yes.
So I was just wondering, just for the high speed came for for the rail? Because there's been a number of comments here. You referenced that you're working with companies, I believe, from France that have experience in this. Have you have you looked at the way Amtrak's done with the Eastern Corridor in the United States?
Definitely, I I wonder if you want to share some thoughts.
We're in close contacts with a lot of these other ventures to share lessons learned for sure.
Because I know that's not a high speed rail operation, but I'm quite familiar with it when I went to school there back in the nineties. It works quite well and do a couple of the other members' points. There's multiple tracks there where not just people can be shuttled, we can move product down. And that's all I'm getting at is, I get we're trying to move people from A to B as fast as possible. But what's going to be the best good to serve the biggest number of people? Because not to poo poo on this, but I see this benefiting people in the large cities. But us in between here, besides maybe the setup costs or maybe, you know, the odd contractor getting a job, people are just going to be flying through our communities at rapid speeds, right? So that's not going to really help somebody in my community in terms of drawing people there. Now, if you wanted to put a station or something in HPM, to the warden's point, that would by all means help us, right? But I'm just saying we need to take a a different look at this in terms of it's great to get people from A to B in six minutes. But if we could maybe span that out to fifteen minutes and we can move people and product, maybe that's a better way for us to go in the future. So I'll just leave it. As I said, I've had experience in terms of when I went to school in Boston, and the tracks there, I believe there's two or three tracks. So you can have, it's not really a high speed rail, but it moves you fast enough. And what it's good for for people like here, commuters, things like that, people could commute to Toronto, get to Toronto in pretty much the same time, thirty or forty minutes. But you would also have multi use for the tracks in that you could put product or ship product from Toronto to Peterborough as well. So just something, I don't know, yes, you guys are well down the road here in terms of the high speed. But I was just wondering if that was considered at all during this process?
Yes, it was. So the RFP process had bidders, those three bidders submit two scenarios, a conventional rail option and then the high speed rail option. Trans Transport Canada was involved in that process, and that was evaluated extensively to determine that the high speed rail would be the most advantageous for this corridor at this time. So.
And just one further thing to few comments about the cost. I was doing some reading in terms of, I know they've tried, they've been trying this in California. I believe they started about seventeen years ago. As of right now, it's still not completed. I think the the first part they're trying to do is about three hundred and fifty kilometers. As I said, that's not completed. The budget is pushing between thirty-three and forty billion for three hundred, and that's American, for three hundred and fifty-five kilometers of track. And they're still not done. That's just my concern. There've been other concerns expressed around this table. Unless, I guess, for people above our pay to make to make the decision. But I'm really concerned about ballooning cost, like all the, a lot of these projects, we're throwing the cost in terms of what it is today when we all know this project's going to take many years. So they're really, you know, if we could get maybe a good focus in terms of what that final number would be, I know it's hard to nail down. But what I'm seeing from other similar projects is quite frightening, so.
Thank you, Counselor Webb, and our CAO, Shane Graham.
Thank you, and through you, my understanding in kind of meetings that we've had or staff have had with you is that there's an opportunity within the plan to move people from outer communities into a station, whether it be through busing. Are you able to expand a little bit on that for our council?
And what my understanding is that you are looking at a transportation service option throughout the county. That was shared with us in a in a recent meeting, which was exciting news to hear that that's being considered and and looked at. So I think when earlier when we were talking about what the station looks like and how to support the existing or future services, so that this is a backbone of transportation throughout the corridor and enables other ways to get to and from this service through local services. We'll make sure that we're accommodating from a station location and that design around the station to incorporate and integrate alongside your plans.
Counselor Lamb said.
More of a comment than a question. I think this is something that's in the future. It's like, once you identify the actual corridor, what is the plan or the idea for purchasing land, leasing land? Because you're going to need a large area for a station plus a huge area for parking. So it's just, those are the things that we really need to be thinking about is it's going to be traveling through this entire community. Maybe not some of the northern parts of our community, but certainly around the city of Peterborough and areas in there, so.
On that note, that process of land acquisition is is being sort of defined as as we move through this early stage of the project. So once we have a better sense of that, obviously, that'll be pertinent for landowners who might be implicated in the project. And of course, being able to brief you on what that looks like will be a part of our plan as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we look forward to more of these presentations, Alexis and Daphne. Certainly, you can see by the number of counselors that have weighed in here, there is immense interest. We have a stake in this, so we look forward to those roundtables and for presentations in the future as you move the project forward. So thank you very much for your attendance today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just need a motion to receive, and I'm looking at Counselor Huntley and Counselor Wilford. All in favor? Thank you. And I'm going to, we're looking at our long service awards, and we have a number of people that just have stayed with Peterborough County because it's such an amazing place to work. So we want to recognize that dedication to Peterborough County Sheridan.
Thank you and through you. Good morning, members of council, staff and guests. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you for the purposes of presenting our employee long service awards. The county celebrates our staff's loyalty. Our people are the backbone of the county in contributions that they, as they achieve their specific service milestones and increments of five years. Today, we are recognizing thirty-seven employees whose service to the county ranges from five to forty years as of December thirty first, twenty twenty-four. I will read out the names of the recipients. Not everyone is able to attend today. But I will ask for those that are in attendance to come forward and please stay at the front if we can start at my desk. We will take a group photo at the end, and if possible, I would appreciate if we could keep our applause to the end of all of the increment presentations. But I do intend to read all the names. So we'll first recognize our five year recipients. We have Sarah Batten, Erin Curran, Kyle Darling, Connor Hill, Joshua Hogan, Sean Lignati, Marissa Martin, Scott Miller, Alyssa Morgan, Austin Reynolds, and Carrie Stevenson. If you could come to the front, please. And our ten year recipients, Sammy Blanchard, Haley Doughty, David Justinski, Daniel Parker, and Brett Robertson. Our fifteen year recipients, Heather Breaky, Kyle Burke, Renee Homiak, Elizabeth King, Thomas McNamara, Catherine Meele, Chris O'Connor, Martin O'Grady, Megan Rose, and Chris Smith. Twenty years, Jennifer Farquharson, Kaziah Holden, Ryan Maloney, and Kimberly Rutter. I want to clap all the time, too. Twenty-five years, Tiffany Cavell, Allison Grattan, Glenn Grattan, Christopher Lee, Melissa Pacman, and Jason Parker. And last, but certainly not least, forty years of service, our own Lynn Fawn. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. This is back when we broke child labor laws and Lynn started at twelve. So ladies and gentlemen, please join me thanking and congratulating the long service award winners this year.
Okay, so we might have to do. So you, you. There, we lay in the middle. Forty years. Okay, right here first, one, two, three, congratulations.
Okay, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you very much again for for all the service and for everything you do. I was saying to Lynn ahead of the meeting that Lynn, I remember her as the face of the county when I started on, it was Autonomy Township at that time before amalgamation. But certainly, that's absolutely amazing, forty years. I want a special round of applause for that, please. Thank you. Consent items, we've had a request to pull item eight A from the consent and nineteen for support. And does any one have anything? Yes, Counselor Black.
Eight F correspondence number nineteen.
Eight F and nineteen, okay. We've got eight and nineteen, and we'll start off with eight A, which is Jennifer's staff regarding the Affordable Rental Housing Property Tax subclass. And I believe Counselor Taylor, you asked for that. Would you?
Yes, thank you very much, Warden. I asked for this to be pulled because, as you can see from the report, the province has given up the curious ability to create a new subclass to reduce property taxes, the property tax rate for multi residential affordable RGI housing projects in the village of Keen. We have one of each. We have an RGI housing units and an affordable housing building. We are in the process of discussing with Peterborough Housing the renewal of our agreement with our with our, in our RGI facility. And they have asked a question about whether the county intends to implement this new property tax class to reduce the to reduce the property taxes because that all factors into the operating cost, which of course they assist on. I would, I hope, it's my belief, and I would encourage county council not to introduce this new property tax tax class and to and to pass a bylaw, which we need to do before the end of September to do so. The county of Peterborough, about five years ago, proactively reduced the property tax rate for multi res units from one point seven eight percent down to one percent, the same as residential tax rate. So I'm going to round that to about three quarters. We we already reduced the property taxes for for multi residential units by seventy-five percent. We did that without any encouragement from the province with the city, and it was the right move. We phased it in, so it's complete this year. If we were to further reduce the taxes for multi residential units, that reduction in property tax revenue would have to go on to the back of somebody else, and it's quite likely it would be residents. So I think we've already hit the residents hard and offered some tax relief for multi res properties. And I'm hoping that county council would just believe it as it is. That's it. Thank you. I don't know if Jennifer has anything to supplement that with, but that's that's what I'm hoping that we do. Hoping we do nothing.
Okay, so just to receive then is what you.
And I asked Jennifer that, and here we needed a motion to do nothing, we just do not do not introduce the bylaw.
And we also, you know, in our agreement, fifty-four point nine percent is what the county is paying right now to towards that social housing. So I think we are certainly, you know, pulling our weight around that. So thank you, Counselor Taylor, for that. So then we'll move on then to nineteen. Eight, so correspondence eight and nineteen, we'll move to that. Yes, and Deputy Warden Sanus, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, please. This is a resolution from municipality of Tweed asking that the provincial and federal government be involved in exploring incineration as an option for dealing with garbage. And I think we should be exploring all options in incineration included. So I would move to support this resolution from Tweed.
Okay, yes, and second by Counselor Webb, all in favor? Yes, and Jim, you want to speak to it?
Hold as well. And anybody who hasn't looked at it, there's a full resolution in here for incineration and so on. So it's well worth reading, and I I think it's well within this within our realm here to push for this because putting putting it in the ground, we know is not going to work anymore. Gladly second it, Ms. Rutter.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. I think energy recapture, we have to look at all the options here and and certainly that is one that is on the table. So then we'll move to nineteen, and this is Strathro Karadoc Resolution Regarding the Blue Box Producer Responsibility. That's been on the on the forefront with it coming up January first, twenty twenty-six. So Counselor Black.
Thank you, through your worship. I just want to speak to this because the letters have gone out and the phones are ringing. I had the pleasure of attending at a marina on the west side of Clear Lake. The cottage association there is a hundred and forty. The Cottage Association there is a hundred and forty members. Forty of them are on Hiawatha Lane, which comes off Court Park. The other hundred are water access and islands that are part of that Cottage Association. And they have an agreement with the marina to bring their recycling and deposit the recycling before they jump in their cars to go home at the marina. And there's a, there's a bin system set up there specifically for their residential recycling. And meeting with the president, he's got a cost estimate on that of close to ten thousand dollars a year for those residents to have their residential recycling picked up by a private, private company. I brought it forward to Sheridan and Carrie, obviously, at this point. But, you know, Sherry said that she would speak to the service provider and ask them if they'd be willing to do that. I don't think that's a strong enough response, frankly. It is residential. We're going to have this situation come up. There's lakes everywhere in the townships and marinas cooperate with in recycling for island properties and water access properties. And it's residential recycling. It is their responsibility. However, that is set up or however it is collected, it is their responsibility. We're going to get enough pushback from the other businesses, the non eligible. We don't need to be getting pushback from residential recycling. This community of individuals have made an incredible effort to collect recycling and keep it out of our landfill site. And now they're being told that it costs up to ten thousand dollars a year to do that. And you've got to remember, that's only six months of the year. The island properties, once the ice comes in, it's, so that's only for six months of the year. So I just want to make sure, again, I, I know the county has already sent a letter to the minister, I believe, on this. So I'm not asking to make any more work for staff on this. I just want to bring it forward because at a minimum, given the decision of this council, we have to protect our residents who have made a special effort in this case to collect recyclables. If the cost is going to be ten grand a year, it's going to go in the garbage. That's what I've been told by this, this person. So we have to make a special effort and be very forceful and strong when speaking to the service provider that this is residential and they need to figure out how to pick it up.
Thank you. Counselor Amyott.
Yes, thank you. And through you, I too asked to have this pulled as well. It's sort of, and along the same lines as what Counselor Black has identified, this is only the beginning of what we're going to be dealing with. We're already, I mean, I know county staff are receiving those nasty emails and phone calls too from people that are angry about this. And we need to remember that we did not put ourselves in this position. So I think it's important that we support this. And I just wonder whether or not we could maybe have a bit of a, not a more than just a motion of support, but to add some wording in. It's similar to what we had moved at North Coortha here a couple of months ago. But just that we support, you know, this resolution regarding the blue box producers. And, and further, if the producers are unable to meet the targets as set out under O R E G three nine one slash two one, and if they cannot effectively and efficiently collect recycling from all sources, as was previously done by municipalities, then perhaps the province should consider having municipalities resume the blue blocks, blue box collection and have the producers pay the municipalities directly for the cost to provide this service. And further, that the premier and all the M P's in our county V C C'd on that.
Thank you, Counselor Amyott. Yes. So would you like to make that motion?
I would be happy to.
Okay, okay. And second, or Counselor Black? All in favor? So just on this front, I, I did sat, sit at a round table put on by the chamber yesterday with the Minister of Red Tape. And this was brought up and actually a business from, certainly that was from Absley. And so she reached out and there was five different entities that she looked to doing this service for her business and only one responded. Certainly, the minister is aware of this. A M O is on top of this as well. I would suggest that we reach out to all our M P Ps on this. The other thing, when you speak, Counselor Black, coming from the islands, you know, into the marinas, there's also the fact there are apartments on top of businesses. And how do you differentiate which is the apartment recycling and which is the business recycling? There's a lot of glitches in this legislation and it is not, it's going to fill, fill up our landfills that have less than ten years. So this is a huge problem and the province is getting lots of pushback. So we need to keep doing that. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Will.
I, I think it's, a lot of it could be solved in our rural areas. If the recycling from the businesses could be taken at our dumpster transfer stations. And this, this lady from Absolutely that you were talking about, she's talked to me, obviously, she's talked to Carolyn. But the lowest, lowest price they got, I think, was thirty five hundred or four thousand dollars to pick up the recycling. And, you know, they're saying, hey, give me a rebate of three thousand dollars on my taxes and we'll, you know, we'll do this. But if, if they could take it to the transfer station, I think it'd be, be solved. So could that somehow be added to the motion with, with approval of the mover and seconder?
Counselor Will, I'm wondering if we don't bring this forward as a notice of motion and have our own from the county if we could entertain that and come to our next meeting.
Through you, I think the original motion that was passed is fine. It's just really whether the original mover would like to amend to add Counselor Will's suggestion or not. I don't, I don't think that we need a notice of motion. We've, we've captured the motion effectively. If Counselor Will could just maybe reiterate the exact addition that you're suggesting, then I think the original mover could consider it. So just not clear exactly, Counselor Will, and what the addition is.
Yeah. Carolyn, would you?
I, if I may, I know what Jim's talking about and because we had this discussion with our, our way supervisor at our last meeting as well and talked about some of the, but that's just one of the challenges. You know, whether or not, yes, if people could bring it to our transfer station, but the reality is, and I keep coming back to this, is that's why I put that specific wording in there about, you know, we were already doing it, you know, you know, we were offering the service and doing it well, right? And very effectively and efficiently. And it just, it's frustrating to think that we're going to try to make, make all these changes. I don't want to lock us into something and say, okay, now all these businesses can go to the dump necessarily or to the transfer station, right? Because it may still not be, you know, the best fit, right? At the end of the day, you know, we were providing a service, we were doing it well, and the province has messed it up by, by going the route that they're going. So I'm just, I don't want to put anything specific like that. Maybe there is something else that needs to come forward at, at our next meeting, more specifically about some of the things that we need to look at. But I wouldn't want to add any of these things in without getting some feedback from, you know, certainly from our staff as well.
Thank you. I have Counselor Wilford and Counselor Black.
Sure you, Madam Warden. Yesterday, we were informed by our Public Works and Environmental Service Manager that the transfer station in Norwood bins will be gone. So you can't say that it's going to be going to your transfer bins unless you have the information if your bins are going to be there. And that's going to be a hard hit on our residents. Like Carol Amey out said, we are doing well in our municipalities and it's the province that has caused this in a big way and they better fix it because there's going to be a lot of recycling going to the waste.
Thank you. Counselor Black.
Thank you, through your worship. Yeah, I mean, a good point, definitely for Jim, for sure, Counselor Wayland. I, I think the issue with the transfer stations is the agreement locally with the service provider is for their use. Any other recycling that would come in, I C I recycling would be, have to be separated, they're saying. So it, it's a little bit more complicated than, I agree with what you're saying, the principle of it, that allow people to bring it. But I, I think we'd be better off with a notice of motion that staff can maybe put together around how that might work. Because we've already seen one situation where that station is going. They're not going to sign a new agreement with it. I believe in Sal when they have come to us and said they will sign an agreement with us to continue recycling at our station. But that may not be the case everywhere too. So I think it's a little more complicated. I understand and support the idea absolutely a hundred percent. And I think Carrie did suggest that in, in her report to us anyways. But there's contractual and legal issues around how we might make that work. So I wonder if staff could look at it a little bit deeper and what are the options that way? And then it becomes a local municipal decision, whether they want to extend the contract to do that. So I don't know that that would be a county issue at that point. I think it would be a lower tier municipal issue then.
I think the other thing too is as of January first, that businesses and residents cannot be picked up in the same vehicle. So therefore the carbon footprint and the fact we are rural Ontario, our businesses, it's not like being in the G T A where businesses are door to door. So therefore this has a far greater impact on our businesses as well. Deputy Warden Sanus and then Counselor Taylor.
Thank you very much, through you. At A M O, this question was posed in the bear pit asking about non eligible recycling being picked up. And the minister came back and said it was never eligible. The municipalities chose to pick up and he made it pretty clear that the province was not going to take it over. So we have to be very loud, going back to the province, saying this is not acceptable.
Agreed. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Warden Clark. Just a comment. I think that the whole business of waste collection and recycling will change dramatically if we can get the province to shift their position on incineration. All of these things that, all of these things are some, I fear, where to put them, most of them can be incinerated and there's a benefit to it.
Energy recapture is the key. Thank you. Any further comments? Then I'm seeing that the motion stands. Yes?
Okay, so sorry. We've already had a motion from Counselor Amyott passed. Counselor Black's suggestion, staff don't write notice of motions. Council can bring it forward, any member. And, and of course, we will help you do that. But if you're suggesting that staff bring a report back, you'll need to put a motion on the floor for that.
With the wording if necessary. Thank you.
Okay, and that, yes, after to that, oh, yes, Counselor Graham with that question, then I see Counselor Armstrong.
Just for efficiency and process, so Carrie, just, I'm just wondering if the motion should be rescinded because wouldn't the motion, what it's intending to do is support the report that you're coming back with. So does it, is it kind of duplicitous to have a motion about the content when we're waiting to come back with a, an actual report to outline exactly what the advocacy is going to look like?
I believe that the, the motion that Counselor Amyott put on the floor to support that piece of correspondence and, and add North Coortha is, is, is fine. But we would need an additional motion to bring a report back.
Okay, all right. So that's second to Counselor Black. All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. Can I have a motion now to receive the balance of the correspondence? Counselor Nelson and Counselor, looking around trying to, Counselor Wayland, all in favor? Thank you. Now a motion to receive the consent items and looking at Counselor Taylor and Counselor Armstrong, all in favor? Thank you. All right. So I will now turn it over to Lynn for her report around our insurance renewal.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden and members of council. This report is to seek council's approval of our annual insurance program renewal, the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six term. In August of twenty three, council approved the awarding of proposal eight, two thousand and twenty three for insurance and risk management services to Intact Public Entities in partnership with Westland Insurance. This will be the third year of the three year agreement. There is an option to extend the term without any other change in agreement for two additional one year periods up to a maximum term of five years. We continue to be happy with Intact and Westland Services. Their staff have provided training, guidance and opinions to the county. Their responsiveness and expertise is invaluable from a risk management perspective. This year's renewal has an increase of four point three percent, which is lower than premiums we've experienced from two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, where premiums were in excess of one million dollars. The increase is attributed to a four percent inflation applied to all property assets as well as our claims history. The municipal, sorry, the municipal insurance market is still hard, which has caused many municipalities to still experience significant premium increases and some unable to obtain coverage. This insurance program does not include our cyber program. It's a separate policy established through a cooperative R F P with E O W C. The premium for October one, two thousand and twenty five to October one, two thousand and twenty six is nine hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, representing a four point three percent increase or thirty nine thousand, one hundred and seventy five over last year's premium. Staff's recommendation is that report CPS two thousand and twenty five, twenty one insurance program renewal be received and that the insurance program renewal to Intact Public Entities Inc. in partnership with Westland Insurance for a premium cost of nine hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred and one dollar, excluding applicable taxes, be approved.
All right, thank you. And thank you for all the work put into this. I think we're being well served. Questions? Yes, Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, Warden Clark. I have one question and a comment. Question is, how much is our cyber insurance?
Last year, my recollection, I believe it was just around fifty, between fifty and fifty four thousand dollars annually.
Okay, thank you. The comment is, and I, I'm supportive of the recommendation, but I am in sticker shock that we are paying a million dollars for insurance. I understand our asset base is growing. I understand inflation. I understand hard market. I understand all of those things. But I am absolutely shocked that we are spending a million dollars for insurance. I don't know that we can do anything about it, but I just want to point out that that's a very large expense item for which we're not providing services to our customers. Certainly, we're minimizing risk and all that good stuff, but a million dollars is a lot of money.
Thank you, Counselor Armstrong. That certainly is. And then if you added all the insurance that each municipality pays around this table. Yes, C A O.
Through you, just, just for information for council, in two thousand and fourteen, we paid one point four million. So we've actually gone down and then gradually been creeping up. But at that point, we only had twenty five million coverage and now we have fifty million because what we're seeing in lawsuits is that they're coming in significantly higher than they used to.
Thank you, Sheridan. And I, Counselor Will.
Thank you very much. Hi Lynn. Lynn, I see everything here about buildings. What about our cars or vehicles and so on and so forth? Is that a separate policy?
No, fleet is covered in this corporate.
Everything. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Yes. Okay, move by Counselor Graham. And second, I think Counselor Armstrong or Counselor Lamb's head, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Lynn. And Rhonda, speaking to our application for Rod.
Good morning, Warden and county council. And I have a report in front of you that speaks to getting approval to advance to funding applications for the Rural Ontario Development Program. One, if we will be the lead applicant and one, we will be a partner applicant. Um, one if we will be the lead applicant and one we will be a partner applicant. Um, the first one is a rural transportation project. The lead applicant will be Community Care Peterborough. And we are trying to assess and, and obtain a feasibility study on rural transportation options. We know rural transportation is a challenge for individual residents and getting to work and employment. And so this is a way for us to try to connect those dots and position ourselves for future um, bigger, larger projects. The second project, Peterborough County would be the lead. And it's really trying to address um, some of the provincial and federal programming to try to expand and diversify our local businesses. Right now, a majority of our businesses are selling to the local regional market. We need to get them to diversify and help them to grow, but there's some hesitancy and some uncertainty about how to go about doing that. So this would be bringing in some funding to help build a toolkit to be able to do those workshops and seminars and help businesses understand how to build out their business case and attend a trade show to be able to expand their, their. So, um, of that, we would be looking to dip into our Economic Development Reserve Fund for match dollars through Rod if we're successful.
Okay, thank you Rhonda. I'll open it up for questions. I see none. Uh, yes, deputy Warden Sennis. Okay, and a second on that? And councillor Armstrong, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you Rhonda. Okay, and we'll have Brian come to the podium, our manager of operations and fleet.
Um, thank you, uh, Madam Warden and through yourself to council, just uh, here to present a report today. Uh, speaking about our county fleet. Uh, we have a fleet of 19 tandem trucks that we use for operational maintenance of roads and winter uh, maintenance is, is a primary resource for that. Um, trucks through post-COVID have come uh, probably anywhere from a 22 to 24 month delivery. And so uh, we're struggling to keep uh, active fleet moving on the, on the roads. Uh, so this report is looking into future requests for 2026, 2027 and seeking some pre-approval from, from our council to uh, enable procurement processes to initiate so that we can receive delivery of those vehicles in a timely manner. Uh, so there's uh, two separate requests here, one for 2026 for a single tandem truck. Uh, and then seeking uh, again, permission to initiate procurement for uh, two trucks in 2026 that would be delivered in 2028. Uh, there's no uh, financial commitment in advance. This vehicles would be paid for on the time of, at the time of delivery. Uh, but it is uh, uh, seeking the request and initiate that procurement uh, now uh, in order to receive those vehicles in a timely manner. So that's the general request.
Okay, thank you for that report and nothing new to us. I think many of the councils have addressed this uh, through other procurements uh, uh, regarding fleets. So uh, I see councillor Taylor and uh, councillor Wellin first and then councillor Taylor.
Okay, thanks. Um, hi Brian. Um, um, where are you buying the trucks from? Are you putting any stipulations on it?
Uh, through the warden, uh, they will be open uh, procurements. Uh, right now, there is not a long-term procurement in place for uh, for these vehicles. So it'll be an annual procurement and uh, um, if there is uh, some stipulations or requirements, that would come through that future procurement process. We don't have a, a defined right now.
So if the lowest bid is American, do you take it?
Uh, the procurement policies stipulate yes.
I think we better change the policy. Um, I see Mark, uh, Mark is changing the federal policy to Canadian. I don't see why we can't. Um, is there any reason why we can't do that?
Uh, through the warden. So our council policy, our purchasing policy does uh, stipulate that we prefer businesses that are either Canadian or have headquarters in Canada. Uh, so that will be part of the RFP, but I think traditionally most of our vehicles have been sourced from the US. Unfortunately, I don't think there are a lot of Canadian manufacturers.
Well, it wasn't made here, it made in the States and a whole bunch of good trucks aren't made in the States. So um, um, I'm just saying that um, we should be should be not, not buying from them if we can help it. Uh, I know that may be a personal thing, but I, I don't even buy their strawberries with, boy, oh, boy, they look good besides Canadian.
I, I couldn't agree more councillor Wellin. I do the same. Um, yeah, so our policy does give preference to um, products that are either purchased in Canada or non-American, I guess is maybe the easier way to say it. That's where the preference will go. Um, but if our only proponents come in are, that are US, then we will be awarded to a US firm.
I'll turn it down.
Councillor, I, I think we're all on the same page councillor Wellin. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Warden Clark. Uh, Brian, um, if council gives pre-approval in 2025 for two trucks to be delivered in 2028, does the manufacturer assure us we will get 2025 prices?
Uh, through the warden, the procurement processes, uh, so uh, we would start the 25 procurement now for a 2027 vehicle. Typically, the delivery is the cost, the time of issuance of the purchase order. So uh, again, there's no guarantees on that. Uh, again, with tariffs and other things that come into play, they're always a factor on, on that delivery. Um, but the procurement process and the uh, would ultimately dictate that uh, that, that pricing. So.
So are you saying, I'm sorry, you're saying if we, if um, if the procurement goes out in 2026 for two trucks delivered in 2028, um, we'll have a general idea with the cost, but it's not guaranteed because it could be additional cost factor, Dan, is that correct?
Uh, through the warden, that, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Huntley, councillor Black.
Uh, through you, Chair. Uh, yeah, we've seen these long procurement times on these trucks. It's kind of the, the new world order really. Unfortunately, and yeah, they ended up with spring costs at the end of the, they weren't anticipating. So getting ahead of it as best we can is, is, is the right thing to do in this case. I said, you know, unfortunately it doesn't work with our cycles, but it's something we got to do. But I guess my, my, my question is, could any of these trucks be attributed to growth and development? And would they be able to apply any sort of development charges under these, you know, these vehicles?
So uh, through the warden, the particular trucks in question in this report are simply replacements for existing fleet. Uh, again, as identified in the report, trucks have a, a current nine-year cycle. So these are trucks are coming end of their cycle. They are being disposed of and pure replacements. So there is no growth component to this procurement process.
Councillor Black.
Thank you through your warden. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with councillor Huntley and and certainly councillor Wellin. I find myself agreeing with councillor Wellin a lot today. Could be a dangerous thing, uh, either way, but uh, um, no, and I, and I agree that, you know, getting on, on the list uh, for those vehicles is the right thing to do. Uh, as councillor Wellin said, the, the federal government is changing, going to change their procurement policy and I'm sure the provinces will follow. And to go up to 2028, three years from now, it may be a different story. There may be a Canadian producer at that point. Um, if those truck manufacturers in the US find out that, you know, nobody's going to buy those trucks from Canada, um, even though we're only 10% the size of the US, it'll be a sizable piece of their market. They may decide to do something in Canada where we can buy them. So that's my only concern about projecting out three years from now and making a commitment three years and now for which will probably a US producer. Uh, I know the RP says, you know, it uh, it would be a preference, but I'm sure the scoring uh, for that is fairly low. Uh, in the total, the, the price matrix would probably be nine, 80% of, of the scoring. So it's not likely that um, that would be the case. So um, I support the motion at this point because we don't know what we don't know. But uh, I'm crossing my fingers that three years down the road, where there may be somebody in Canada that could produce those trucks for us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Warden Clark. Sorry Brian, I had another question that I wanted to ask. A concern. Uh, if we, if we give pre-approval for ordering two trucks uh, to be delivered in 2028 and we give that approval in 2026, do we just give a, once it's gone through the procurement process, we've made a decision, do we just give a deposit? Or do we have to pay full amount upfront to be guaranteed delivery?
Uh, through the warden, I may pass this over to Jennifer as well if she wants to chime in on it, but the, the, the typically, typically the uh, the procurement process would be uh, to issue a appeal uh, for the, the, the equipment at the time of procurement. Uh, but full payment of the, of the equipment won't happen until the time of delivery.
Okay.
So it'll be 2028 when the costs are actually paid out and that would then obviously enable companies to evaluate if there's any other costs or tariffs or anything like that come through that two-year window while they're manufacturing that vehicle prior to delivery.
Thank you. That makes me feel easier because companies, no matter how big or small, have been known to close their doors. And I just want to make sure we weren't, weren't to be caught in that position. Thank you.
Would you like to chirp in on anything? Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mayor Taylor, would you like to make that motion then? All right, and uh, councillor Huntley, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, notice of motion. I tried to get one on the books, but does anyone have anything further? All right, and announcements? Does anyone have any announcements? Just uh, like to say to Kevin Monaghan, uh, that you've got your system uh, up and running in a very expedient manner for your residents. So uh, well done. And uh, I'd like to make one further. Um, I'd like to announce that Jen Stover's birthday is today. So happy birthday. She's a numbers girl. We won't ask her to disclose. So now we're going to move into closed session under the authority of the Municipal Act under section 239 2K. Um, and I would like a mover and a seconder. Move by councillor Graham, second by councillor Watson, all in favor?